Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled Committee of the Whole meeting and immediately thereafter, a special city council meeting. The Committee of the Whole meeting is called to order. Let the record show that all the aldermen save for Alderman Bruno are present this evening. We've got a full agenda for the Committee of the Whole, and we'll begin with approval of the Committee of the Whole minutes from March 28, 2016. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Marks, seconded by Singer. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item 3B is to recommend -- excuse me, item 3A is to recommend approval of special event application for the Tour de Cure, June 12, 2016, and request for use of public rights of way and city services.
Second.
Motion by Cummings, seconded by Marks. Are there any questions or comments? It's a great event. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 3B is to recommend approval of special event application for Swedish Days, June 21 through the 26 of 2016, and request for use of public rights of way and city services. Motion by Alderman Sino.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marks. Any questions or comments for Mrs. Gaines who's with us this evening? Seeing none, hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Moving right along, item 3C is to recommend approval of issuance of Class E6 liquor license to the Geneva Chamber of Commerce for Swedish Days Craft Brew Tent, June 21 through the 26, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Cummings and seconded by Marks. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item 3D, as in David, is to recommend draft resolution authorizing acceptance of proposal to bind coverage for commercial liability, excess workers' compensation, property, boiler and machinery, and excess liability insurance effective April 30, 2016.
So moved.
Motion by Marks.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Sino. We do have guests with us this evening. Are there any specific questions regarding this matter? Seeing none? Oh, Alderman Cummings.
I'd love to hear just an overview of the process that's gone through to decide upon the insurance carrier. I am unfamiliar with this. Just a quick overview.
I can turn that over to our -- oh, you want it?
If you want.
Oh, certainly. I was going to turn it over to the director.
They actually do the --
All yours. All yours.
I'm not sure how much -- I'm Rich DeKlusk with Arthur Gallagher. I'm the Midwest Regional Director for Public Sector. I can talk a lot about Gallagher, but I think I -- just to address your question, we go through each renewal process probably about five months out, and we look at the claims history, the exposures, what the marketplace is doing, and based on those factors, we'll make a decision as to whether or not we're going to market part of the program or if we're going to market the full program. This year, you had some adverse claims experience, so we decided to go full boat into the marketplace and see what we could do. And what had happened was that your current carriers increased your premium a little bit because of the claims experience. We went to 20 different companies. We got, I think, about 12, 13 different quotes on different lines of coverage. But the net effect, what happened was that there were a couple of companies that came in aggressively, and that's -- those are the ones that we're recommending. So we go out, we have contracts with a lot of companies out there, and we're constantly getting bombarded with underwriters coming to our office looking for more business. So we kind of use that along with our premium volume to kind of leverage what we do. And basically, Jessica and I just do public sector. So our clients are all either cities, counties, townships, villages, or special service districts. But all the companies are vetted, they're rated, and our solvency committee reviews them. If there's a downgrade in the rating, we're required to notify you. If there's a second downgrade, we have to come out and discuss that with you. Thankfully, we haven't had that happen probably since mid-'90s or so. So then, we sit down with the city, discuss the options, and come up with a recommendation.
And who pays your fees?
We're on a flat fee.
Okay, from the city?
Correct. Correct. And I've been involved with the City of Geneva since 2006. What had happened is prior to that, you were on a commission and fee split. So what we were able to do is eliminate the commissions, and we just went to a flat fee, which saved the city quite a bit of money.
And that fees remained unchanged since '08, at least, that I know for sure.
Thank you.
Alderman Singer, then Alderman Rodecky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Simoni.
I understand that if we were to terminate your relationship with the city, we have to give you 120-day notice. Is that a common kind of commitment, such?
That is the contract that's been in place since 2006.
Who is it -- who's responsible for determining that period of time? You or the city?
No, it's a joint decision with --
A joint decision?
Yes, yes, sir.
So we are in the midst of creating a new contract with your company at this point in time?
Well, the reasoning for it is because if you decide to change brokers, we would be doing all the work, and it takes us, as I mentioned earlier, it's about a five-month process from start to finish. If that timeframe was shorter, we would be doing all the work and not getting any compensation for it. So if you were to decide to change brokers, 120 days gives you enough time to find a broker, the broker to get his feet on the ground and do something like take over, you know, the marketing aspect of it. And then, this way, we wouldn't be doing -- it's a labor-intensive process to do that. So if you decide 120 days out, we're not in that, you know, we're not expending those hours doing it. So, but that's -- it's not unusual, but the contract was reviewed by the city attorney, and it's not, you know, it's not uncommon.
Why is it that if I were to terminate the contract I presently have with my homeowner's insurance or my automobile insurance, I could do so with a matter of a day or two or whatever?
You can cancel your insurance policies tomorrow if you wanted to. It's our contract.
Are we presently going to --
If I may clarify, this is the agreement we have with them as our broker to represent us, so in lieu of them collecting a commission from the insurance that they write, we pay them a flat fee to do all the work. So other carrier, other brokers maybe don't charge a commission and instead, I mean, don't charge a flat fee and instead collect a commission based on the book of business that they write. So this was the agreement we went into because when we analyzed it, it looked like it would save us money in the long run rather than them being commission-based and fee-based. They're now just flat fee-based.
And we're brokers, we're not insurance companies. So we go out and we do the marketing for you and represent you in the marketplace. This way, there's no conflict of interest because our fee is the same. So if the market is like, if we would have stayed with the companies that you're with right now, your premiums would have gone up. If I was on commission or if our company was on commission, our income would have increased. So what we're doing is we know what the amount of time is that is taken from start to finish to work on your account, including the nine months into the, or I should say the other months into the year, that we handle like certificates of insurance, auto IDs, claim reviews and all that. So the way that you look at it is that regardless of whether the market goes up or down, whether your experience goes up or down, you know, we're going to get paid the same amount. We're not going to benefit from a bad year. And that's what brokers who are on commission do, is that, you know, if you have bad years like you've, I think in that letter that's outlined, normal circumstances, your premiums would have gone up, which means the broker would have been paid more if we were on commission. So we're not because it's regardless whether your losses go up or down, whether the market goes up or down, we're going to get paid the same amount, which is fair.
Is it my understanding that what you are in the midst of engaging yourself in is seeking out what is, and what you feel is to the best interests for the City of Geneva when it comes to determining who the insurers are? Is that what you're doing?
Correct. Yeah, we go through the policies, the terms, the carriers.
Hey, well, let me finish.
Sure.
Then, what you attempt to do is you present those choices to the administration as such, and then they are the ones that make the decision? Or are you the one that says, "This is what we feel is best for you at this point in time"?
We lay everything out and show -- what we do is we get the quotes in, we look at the quotes, see what the differences are, try to make the changes in the terms so they match up as close as possible so that we're not here going through policy forms, you know, with spreadsheets and charts showing what the limits are, deductibles, all that. We try to match everything up as quick, as close as possible so that your decision is going to be based on the carrier reputation, claims-paying ability, the cost, and a couple other intangibles like service and things like that. So it's not going to be, we're not going to be sitting here going back, well, you know, so-and-so's got 90% co-insurance, one's got 80% co-insurance, you know, one has a $5 million limit, another one has 10. We do all that work for you so that you're just looking at those four, five things. So, and I have a lot of clients that don't make decisions solely on price because they have a good relationship with their carriers and they've been with them for a long time. So it's not just a price decision. I mean, I've had companies that have come in and undercut the price, but then I look at it as, okay, how long have they been in business? How long have they been doing public sector? What services do they offer? And are they going to be around in three or four years to pay the claims that occur? A lot of times, you have a claim that occurs today, it may not come to fruition for four or five years because of litigation, attorney's fees, sometimes a lot of different circumstances.
All right, we are presently in the midst of renewing the contract that you are proposing? Is that what we're in the midst of doing here today?
That's part of -- yeah.
Is the contract still one in which there's yet this 120-day notification?
Correct.
And you could not accept a lesser bit of time if we said we only want to do 90 or 60 days?
Um, I don't see --
How much of a burden would that be?
Let me ask the alderman a question.
Sure.
I'm confused about the line of questioning.
I am too.
No, I'm confused by your line of questioning.
Yeah.
I'm not certain I understand the nature of the questions. Is it related to Gallagher's role as broker of our insurance or is it related to Gallagher itself?
Well, I guess what confuses me is that we are here presently making a decision right now at this point in time. I would have liked to made this decision possibly 120 days ago if we were not comfortable with the service we were obtaining from these people. But apparently, you feel comfortable with their service. I mean, does the council feel comfortable with their service? I don't know.
And we're not talking health insurance, of course.
Right.
Okay. Clarify.
No.
Yes, I absolutely feel very comfortable with the services that have been rendered by Gallagher over the last eight-plus years. They have provided not only a savings to the community, a savings to this organization, but the kind of service and response that we expect from somebody that we're paying.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you.
Well, I guess, I, to clarify that. Alderman Singer?
I'm through, thank you.
Alderman Rodecky, then Alderman Simoni, then Alderman Marks.
Well, it does. I didn't think we were looking at their contract. I thought we were just looking at the services tonight. That's what I --
We are. That's why I asked the question of Alderman Singer. I'm not certain --
That's why --
If I may just clarify, the compensation agreement, when it was approved in '06 or '08?
'06.
'06. It called for automatic renewals. So you're not technically approving that tonight because it automatically renews every year unless you give the 120-days notice. What we're doing tonight is approving the recommendation for the renewals of the insurance carriers. So our policies for property, for general liability, for workers' compensation reinsurance, for the umbrella coverage, machinery and boiler, and all of those.
Alderman, excuse me, Rodecky, then Simoni.
Thank you. I guess I just have a couple of quick questions probably for Stephanie. It looks like our loss history hasn't been the best across the board in comp, property, and in auto, and I understand what's driving more comp. In property, we had some adverse results and also in auto. So can you tell me about the losses and can you tell me what we're doing from a loss-control perspective to help control our rates?
Sure, and I, I'll, I think Jessica and Rich have the details, but a lot of those auto losses are others hitting us, some rear ends.
But that, but if we subjugate and collect the money, why would that go against our loss history? If it's not at fault accident, but they, would the, why would the carriers consider that as a?
We don't, we don't always, they don't always have insurance. There was a particular claim back from 19, excuse me, 2013, 2014?
We have a big U.M. claim?
Which, it was, it was a very large claim. It was a fire truck, hit an ambulance, hit a police car, hit a limo, hit another car, and that was in litigation for about two years.
Okay, so it's liability claims then that are driving it?
No, I think in this case, looking at separate policies, property, we had four big property claims, and I can tell you, one was the --
One was the door, yeah, the door.
One was cemetery damage, the building had water damage. We don't know when that happened. One was the truck going through the building.
Yeah.
And --
A sewer treatment.
There was a, there was a fiber line hit, which was a big property claim because the location device, no matter how we located it, somehow couldn't find it. So those are the big property claims. The workers' comp, you know, that's being driven by one particular claim.
Yep.
So I, overall, we have a very strong safety program. We investigate all the claims, we look at what we can do better, we have safety committees. They're then --
So we don't have a frequency problem? I understand if you have a large U.M. claim or something.
Yeah, it's just, it, you know, they come and they go, so we had, we haven't had the best of years.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Simoni, then Alderman Kilburg?
Yeah.
Before I recognize someone else's second type?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions. One is, in the last 10 years, when have we gone out to bid to other brokers to, as in an RFP or?
'06 was when we went out for the broker.
'06, so we haven't, we've been using the same broker for 10 years?
'08, I'm sorry. I've been corrected. '08 was when we went out.
So eight years. So we don't know if this is the best we can do because we've never tested it against another broker, correct?
Under that frame of questioning, yes, I would say that's correct, but, because you can't, one carrier won't quote to two brokers. So you have to have a broker of record. Now, whether that broker's going to get the same thing as another broker, I don't know the answer to that, and maybe Rich can address that. I don't --
Yeah, I mean, it's, we are the largest brokerage firm in the country for public sector, largest in Illinois Midwest. We do about $80 million worth of premium volume. Our retention rate is about 98%. Industry average is about 81%, 82%, which means we're losing very few clients. We do most of the municipalities, do about 28 counties in the state of Illinois. But there's a reason why we're not losing clients and we're growing. So we're doing something right.
Well, I would have to respectfully disagree when you have an automatic renewal contract and one that you need to renew 120 days in advance unless, unless staff comes to the council prior to that 120 days and asks if that renewal, if the council is okay with that renewal versus an automatic, we run into these situations every year.
Yeah, and you had --
We don't know the number until we --
Right, give you an example. On your property insurance, your loss ratio was 286%, and your premium went up very slightly. Your overall premium went down considering the property losses, the auto losses, the work comp losses. Average right now for a good, good risk is about 4% up. So we were able to, through our, like I said, our leverage with our insurance companies, the number of carriers that we use, we were able to keep your costs down. And that doesn't even include the exposure increases, your payroll's going up, vehicles. If you take an old vehicle off, put a new vehicle on, it costs more to replace that, wages, all that stuff, medical costs, all that going up. If you're at flat or below, you're doing very well.
So if we continue to manage an older fleet and not give pay raises, our premiums go down?
It would probably go down, yes.
Okay.
That's an irrelevant statement with respect to the topic at hand.
Yeah.
Well, no, I, he brought it up and said that the equipment, so I'm just curious if that, if that theory holds true.
Equipment is one thing, the other topic is, I believe.
Yeah, a vehicle that you bought five years ago is going to cost you more today than it did five years ago. So that's all factored in. A cost to send an employee to the emergency room costs more today than it did five years ago. That employee is making more today than he did five years ago. So it's just, it's an inflationary thing. That's why I'm saying, you're actually ahead of the game. If your premiums are going down and everything else is going up, yeah, if everything stayed the same, your premium decrease would probably be somewhere between 5% and 7%. But the reality is, they didn't go, they didn't stay the same, they went up.
Would, are we quoted as a standalone or part of a pool?
Standalone.
Would it dramatically be different if we were part of a pool?
That's a whole nother discussion. We manage pools as well. We have, I think, 32 or 34 pools in our company. They're all different. They take on different risks, they have different criteria for getting in, but generally speaking, they're more for the long haul, a little bit more stable, a little bit more expensive.
Have we compared standalone versus pool?
Yes.
And standalone is more cost-effective?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Kilburg?
Yeah. You shared that you work with a lot of other municipalities, and I can't remember what the number was, but several.
Several.
What are you seeing other municipalities do to reduce their premiums and some of the factors that drive premiums? Are, are you seeing anything creative or anything that other, other customers that you work with, obviously other cities that you consult for? Are you seeing anything that we should be taking a look at? Obviously, we, you said we didn't have a good year.
Yeah.
What should we be doing differently that we're not doing?
Well, here's, there's something that we talk about with our clients, and that's called total, total cost of risk, T-COR, what we abbreviate it as. And that's not just your premiums. Because you've got self-insured retentions, you've got some things that are uninsured that you're collecting. You look at what your premium costs are, and then you look at what you're paying out of pocket, and that's your total cost. If you look at your losses plus your premium cost plus anything else that you have to add in there, roughly speaking about, and I'm going off the top of my head, about averages, about 60% of your costs are coming from workers' compensation. And I've seen it go up to 80% on some clients, I've seen it go down to about 35, 40%. But if you look at what you can control, it's those dollars that are being spent for workers' compensation claims. So if I was to do anything, I would, I would really hit that hard because the effect is going to be dramatic there. If you're looking at just the auto claims, the auto claims go up and down. You can have a good year, you can have a bad year, but your deductibles are low, so it's not going to impact your total cost as much.
So you're saying if there's one area that we really need to focus on, it'd be workers' comp?
Yeah, and I looked at the loss information just before the meeting started. You know, it goes, it's sporadic, and I don't want to discuss specifics in a public meeting.
No, no.
It, it does fluctuate a little bit, and then, again, this year, you had one large claim. But realistically, if you can get that stabilized and just moving forward, you're in good shape.
So you're sort of seeing an emphasis on safety and all the things that are sort of tied into workers' comp then?
Correct, yeah.
If you're going to do something, those would be areas that you'd probably want to emphasize?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wish to ask questions or speak prior to recognizing Alderman Cummings for a second time? Alderman Cummings.
I wanted to focus in on something you said so that everyone understands it because I think it's really important. You're acting as a fiduciary, right? Or as close to a fiduciary for us as possible?
I would say a consultant.
Okay. So I like this stance a lot better than a, than a commission broker. And again, it's pretty complex stuff, and we get shown two things, and we don't understand everything about each thing, and we're getting recommended one over the other. And it very well could be from somebody who's getting paid on commission that the first thing that is getting offered to us and recommended to us is because they're getting a significantly higher commission for recommending that. And in a flat fee structure, I like to think, in a, in a good world, that we're getting, that we're really getting the best thing offered to us. And I, I just, I don't want to harp on it, but I think it's an important point that we all need to, to realize. I like transparency, I like fiduciary duty, and we're pretty damn close to that right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else with this? We have a motion by Marks and a second by Sino to accept the proposal as presented. Voice vote is sufficient. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Seven affirmative, excuse me, eight affirmative votes and one nay. Item 3E is to recommend draft resolution authorizing execution of professional services agreement with We Lent Legal Services for recording and transcription services for plan commission, historic preservation commission, and zoning board of appeals effective May 1, 2016 through April 30, 2018 at a rate of $42 per hour. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Kilburg makes the motion, and Marks makes the second. Any questions or comments regarding this proposal? Alderman Simoni?
What's a ballpark annual cost for this? Do we know? It's $42 an hour, but do we know what our annual?
Celeste is with us this evening. Celeste, do you want to perhaps provide some insight with respect to the heavy workload? Depends on how long the meetings are.
I mean, I just, out of curiosity more than anything else.
Sure.
You want a ballpark figure for the year?
Just, yeah, an annual, what, our average year cost?
Celeste, before you begin, could you kindly introduce yourself?
My name is Celeste Wyland. I do your minutes, well, not your, this committee, but the three that are mentioned. Ballpark figure, I would say anywhere probably between $4,000 to $6,000.
A year.
A year.
Okay.
And it can fluctuate, you know, obviously.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the proposal, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Celeste. Item 3F is to recommend draft resolution authorizing the proclamation for Arbor Day 2016. Woo! Alderman Sino makes the motion.
Second.
Alderman Marks makes the second. Mr. Babica, how many years in a row is this? Or I should ask Flanders, shouldn't I? How many years in a row is this?
16.
16 years in a row. I call him Flanders, I shouldn't do this. That's pretty cool. Any questions or comments for Nate or the gang? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Nate. Item 3G is to recommend draft resolution authorizing the waiving of bidding process and execution of professional services contract with Wedeco Xylem Water Solutions USA in an amount not to exceed $43,692 for wastewater treatment plant UV system repairs. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Marks makes the motion, and Singer makes the second. Questions or comments? We have, of course, the director, we have Mr. Van Gescam as well with us this evening. No UV, yes UV, no UV? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Off to 3H, folks, is to recommend draft resolution authorizing the publication of a zoning map for the City of Geneva.
So moved.
Singer makes the motion, seconded by?
Second.
Marks.
It's a lively group, isn't it?
Well, it's like, any questions or comments regarding this section? All in favor of 3H, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item 3I is to recommend draft ordinance amending the Eagle Brook Planned Unit Development Ordinance Number 89-48 related to parking and loading berth requirements, and an amendment Ordinance Number 89-48 related to parking and loading berth requirements, and an amendment to ordinance 96-32 related to facade signage for building less than 100,000 square feet, specifically for Pod 1A Columbus Property Group LLC Home Depot.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Marks, seconded by Alderman Cummings. Any questions or comments regarding that wordy item? Mr. DeGroot is present this evening. Do you have any additional information you want to share other than what's in the memorandum?
This is a pretty big question.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to point out that items I, J, and K are all kind of interrelated and need to be voted on in that order. I can provide a brief summary if you like, or I could just wait for questions.
Alderman Marks?
My question was in regards to signage. It was really just mostly on the building, correct? Or is there going to be signage on Randall and Fabian?
For the outlot, there is a freestanding sign that is allowed.
Okay.
And the freestanding sign they've proposed is in compliance with the PUD regulations. The variation that they're asking for was there was a restriction on the east side of the building so that signage wouldn't be visible to homes in Eaglebrook. So they're asking to allow signage on that side of the building. It really wouldn't be visible with the existing Home Depot and Landscape Bentry Drive to the homes in Eaglebrook, and that is kind of the primary entrance for this outlot.
So the, so there is signage on Fabian and Randall, on both or just one?
As proposed, they would be allowed to choose two sides of the building.
Okay, just two sides, okay, the building.
Including the east side.
Not any signs out on, there's, all the signage is going to be on the building, correct?
They would be allowed signage on two sides of the building plus the freestanding sign.
And do we know where that's going, Randall or Fabian or not?
The freestanding sign would be oriented east-west, it would be visible from the north and south.
Okay. So right now, the traffic we see is coming through Bentry and into that back entrance of Home Depot, or really coming through Randall and going through Home Depot's parking lot?
There's an entrance to Home Depot from Fabian Parkway as you head west on Fabian Parkway, but there's also the Bentry entrance to Home Depot, and then there's the entrance from Christina to the north, where you come down past Petco.
Right, I forgot that.
And into the Home Depot site.
And they're mainly, think they're going to be used, which one, probably the Bentry, I would suspect, right?
I think that's the most heavily used entrance for the Home Depot lot.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else from the dais? Alderman Simoni?
Thank you, Mayor. David, on this parking, where they're reducing the parking from one space per 200 square feet to one space per 322 square feet, is that based off of the seasonal usage of the parking lot already? In other words, I know they put out its side parking, a bunch of storage, and, you know, obviously, spring flowers and trees and stuff. I mean, is this based with or without that?
It's based with it. So we, the applicant provided a parking utilization study that incorporated the seasonal outdoors sales and storage of materials. Right now, there's 573 spaces on the site, and the study revealed that even during their peak season, they only need about 273 of those spaces. So the site is pretty overparked.
In the event that, let's just say, the building is put in and parking becomes a problem, do we have recourse in preventing the seasonal usage of the parking lot?
We do. Right now, we issue a temporary permit on an annual basis for the outdoor storage. The special use would eliminate the need to come back to the council on an annual basis. You can always revoke a special use, but that requires a public hearing before the plan commission, and you have to provide evidence that there is a parking problem caused by the special use.
Okay. But if there is, there's, we do have recourse if there is?
That would, that would be the recourse, I believe. I've never gone through a revocation hearing.
Yeah. I just want to make sure in case there's a, that we have a safety net in the event that happens.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Cummings?
Is there going to be a freestanding sign, I guess called a monument sign, so I'm assuming there is, but at the main entrance, Bentry into Home Depot? In which way will that be pointed, facing?
The only freestanding sign that's being proposed is along the Randall Road frontage.
Okay.
Kind of towards the northwest corner of the site, the outlot site.
Okay. All right. So no additional directions as you're turning in from Bentry, but at that point, you'd be able to see the signage on the building that faces east?
Right, that's part of the request for the signage on the east side of the building. We also allow for directional signage up to three square feet, kind of your entrance signs or, you know, directional traffic signs without a permit.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else from the dais? Is there anyone in the audience this evening regarding this topic? Who would like to speak or ask a question? We have a motion on the floor, we have a second. A voice vote of the committee of the whole is sufficient. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We move on to item 3I, which is, excuse me, J, which is related, is to recommend draft resolution granting final planned unit development, plan approval for property located at 2111 South Randall Road, Pod 1A, in the Eaglebrook Planned Unit Development Columbus Property Group LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Cummings, seconded by Marks. Any questions or comments from Mr. DeGroot regarding this matter? 3J?
I just, I just have one. David, this is only for that Pod 1A then, it, you know, because that planned unit development goes from, you know, Fabian all the way down to, I think, Fabian, as we found out one time before. This is only just now talking about that 1A pod.
Right, this is strictly for Pod 1A, which right now is the Home Depot site.
All right, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone in the audience? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Onto item 3K, it's to recommend draft ordinance granting a special use in the B5 Business District to allow temporary seasonal and permanent outdoor storage on the property located at 2111 South Randall Road, Home Depot.
So moved.
Second.
Marks makes the motion, and Cummings makes the second. Any questions or comments regarding this request?
I just, David, I'm sorry. Do they just, do they just ask for a certain number of spots? I mean, are we just saying it's only so much they can use, or is it at their discretion?
Right, so we have, we have a site plan.
Right.
That we've had them submit that outlines what's being stored and in which parking spaces and.
And so that's now set, where every year they could have changed it, but now it is set.
Right, and it's been pretty set for the last few years, once we've started the temporary permit, but before that, it kind of changed year to year, and that's when we met with management at Home Depot and asked them to kind of lock it down.
So the temporary one is really, right now, it's to the south of that building there's a little bit, and then it's mostly in that bigger parking lot in front, right by the entrance, right to the west.
Kind of across that first entrance, right.
Okay. But the temporary also includes that smaller parking lot that they use for storage at times. Is that correct?
Right, and we're identifying those, where there's occasionally garden sheds or the truck rentals that Home Depot offers.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item 3I, L, good lord, recommend draft resolution authorizing the declaration of surplus property in the finance office. It is equipment there too. Alderman Singer makes the motion.
Second.
Alderman Marks makes the second. Ms. Cruz is with us this evening. Is there's any questions regarding the equipment that's to be declared as surplus?
A typewriter?
A typewriter, yeah, no, I thought that.
This is the strange law of the land, isn't it? Yeah, really, if it's a royal typewriter, it'd be worth some serious bucks. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any new business for the benefit of the committee of the whole, from either the dais and/or anyone in the audience tonight? A motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Alderman Simoni makes that motion.
Second.
Alderman Singer makes that second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The committee of the whole meeting is adjourned. We'll take just a brief respite until we begin the special city council meeting. The microphones are being turned off. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to call this special meeting of the Geneva City Council to order. Kindly ask our recording secretary, Ms. Bernard, to take the role call.
Chair Burkhart?
Here.
Donald Cummings?
Here.
Dean Kilburg?
Here.
Craig Maladra?
Here.
Richard Mark?
Here.
Jim Rodecky?
Here.
Tom Simoni?
Here.
Mary Sino?
Here.
Ron Singer?
Here.
We have nine council members present this evening. We have one item of business, that's to recommend resolution Number 26-20, adopting the fiscal year 2016, 2017, general fund, electric, water, wastewater, capital miscellaneous, TRICOM budgets, and classification and compensation plan. This is a continuation of the last council meeting, so I think a motion to put this on the floor is not necessary, correct, Steph?
I already have the motion from, I think, several meetings ago. I think just by way of introduction, so that the council folks know, and of course, anyone tuning in or anyone here in the audience, the budget that was submitted as part of this packet last Thursday evening is the budget that has been amended to include actions taken by this council last week. It's understood by this council that based on those actions, we are somewhere in the neighborhood of approximately $118,995 shy of a balanced budget. It's, I think, also worth noting that, and I know we all know this, that the budget is, you know, the ultimate planning document, if you will, and guiding document. It's our charge this evening to discuss ideas with respect to bringing that budget into balance. We have till April 30 of this month to successfully do so. We are required by Illinois statute to pass a balanced budget, and we are required to pass that budget on or before the 30th of April. So with that, the floor is open for any comments or questions.
Alderman Simoni?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get into a whole bunch of detail, I have a question for Stephanie. I'm trying to figure out how we're $118,995 short if we implemented all the changes. I mean, because we took out $300,000 in revenue, correct?
Correct.
And then we took out $470,000 in health and dental. So with those two, we would be surplus of 177.
Well, the health and dental is distributed amongst all the funds, depending upon how employee salaries are distributed. So what we had to do is, the way, and again, the way the system works, it's person by person by person, so we plugged in no increase to keep it flat, and it automatically uploads those based on where it gets allocated.
Okay, but.
So.
Forget about allocation. If we're removing $300,000 in revenue, and we're removing $470,000 in expenses, and we're removing another $138,000 in expenses for the assistant city administrator, would that budget not be a surplus?
Well, and again, I don't, I don't know if the 400 was the number in the medical and dental out of the general fund. All I can tell you is that we understand what the charge is, and when the renewal comes, it would be capped at that amount. For the budget document, the only way I can get it in the budget is through position budgeting, which is doing it position by position on the plan that each individual employee is on at this current time.
Okay.
And again, a budget doc, and that's why, that's why we're saying it's a planning document, so this is the most that we would spend. So there's obviously changes that happen throughout the year, because again, it's all an estimate.
Well, I understand, but I'm still trying to get a grasp of the fact that if we're, if we're putting in the numbers with no increases, if we're putting in the numbers with no increases, and it's a savings of whatever that number is, four, four, seven, I don't understand, it seems like the numbers did not go, they're going in as the budgeted amount, and that's where we're getting $118,000 deficit. I mean, if you just take simple math that says, you're taking $300,000 out of revenue, taking $477,000 out of expenses, and $138,000 out of expenses, so that's about $600,000 out of expenses and $300,000 out of revenue, the budget should, in my simple mind of math here, be at a surplus of $300,000, not at a deficit of $118,995. Let me just, in simple math, I.
And I agree, in simple math, I would have to rerun the numbers there, but we use a system to budget, and I put the numbers in the system, and all I'm saying is, when it comes out, that's where we're at.
Wait a minute, the banker wants to talk, I'm sure.
Oh, no, not a banker.
He's got banking calculations that'll.
You're taking, we're taking, we're taking $330 in revenue from the general fund.
Right.
We're not taking $470 in expenses from the general fund.
It is a general fund issue, not a overall budget issue. So the $118,995 is a shortfall in the general fund only.
So the budget is not $118 short?
Correct.
The general fund is $118.
I think that was touched on last week. Alderman Rodecky mentioned, oh, 90 million, heck, and then it was clarified it's of 17 million. The general fund only.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
But then, the remaining part of the budget then should be at a surplus.
But we have to do it by fund. We have to balance by fund. You can't balance in total, because each fund is considered its own separate budget.
Okay.
So if you look at that summary sheet.
So are we, are we trying to get $118,000 in the general fund?
That's correct.
Okay. So if we accomplish $118,000 in the general fund.
We're done.
Somewhere down the road here, in the next year.
One percent.
We're going to find.
One percent.
We're going to, well, no, we're going to find not only the $300,000, but now another $118,000. $118,000 of found money is going to be somewhere, somewhere. We don't know where, but it's going to come up when somebody pushes that Watson button and Watson goes, we found it.
Well, I thought the $330 we found, and that's what led to the $118 that we're still short.
Correct. When we made the changes, the surplus that we had, we applied towards fund balance, which was roughly 167 something. So when you eliminated the $300,000, the question last week was, do you want us to continue to put that extra into the fund balance?
Right.
Or do you not want us to? And you said no.
Right.
Which made the difference of 118, 955.
So, so to me, and that's why I kept saying one percent, we're looking for $118,000 out of an $18 million budget, which is less than one percent. So to me, the answer is sort of, I mean, I can, I can dodge this entirely and just ask every department head to come up with a half a percent less.
I got a better idea.
In their budgets. Which is cowardly and everything, I realize.
Anyone want to hear my better idea?
Alderman Simoni still has the floor.
All right. Now that I know we have to come up with $118,000, let me share with you, I passed out a few I want to thank the mayor for making the suggestion that we go talk to the department heads, because a long time I was told, don't talk to the department heads and don't get into the weeds, but if this is getting in the weeds, I like it in the weeds. I sat with Chief Mexon, soon to be Chief Passarelli, and Commander Nash on the overtime for the police. Because as you know, I've had a issue with, with that, a number of us have, and they were kind enough to sit down with me. I asked them that they lock their guns up before I come, because I felt I might be in trouble, but they, they shared with me, which I've shared with you, an overtime comparison survey by department, looking at St. Charles, Batavia, West Chicago, Westmont, Bloomingdale, North Aurora, Glen Allen, South Elgin, and Geneva, with the number of police officers in the parentheses next to it. The handwritten numbers that are in for Batavia and South Elgin, I put those in after Chief Mexon emailed me the following day with more accurate numbers. So you can take a look at comparisons, and these are actual apple-to-apple comparisons. Pages two to four, the chief provided sources of overtime and explanations of each, and then page five and six, were pages that he provided based off of, I think, Alderman Marks' idea of hiring a new officer in lieu of overtime and how that works out. So obviously, if you have questions about these specifics, unfortunately, I got to hand it off to Chief Mexon, because I'm lost after this point here, but, you know, overtime's been a, been an issue. So I asked both the chief and soon-to-be chief and commander if they, you know, if they could come up with ideas on how to generate revenue for the police department to offset And they came up with some great ideas, and one of the ideas, actually, I came up with one idea, they came up with the rest, was the, what if we charge a premium for overtime, instead of overtime, we charge double time for those events, and we generate actual revenue, whether, I don't know if we can do that or not do that, but it's an opportunity to generate revenue when overtime is being used. One of the concerns was that some events will not come to St. Charle, I mean, to Geneva because of the high cost of that, but those are probably smaller events anyhow, and the question becomes one of, is what kind of economic impact do they have to the city to begin with? Second of all, they recommended that if we increased parking tickets from $10, which they are now, and they haven't been increased for a number of years, to $20, which would put us in, with Batavia and St. Charles, similar costs, we could raise another, you know, $80,000 or so. They also said the $2 for the parking garage, if you could raise that to 20, we could generate additional revenue as well. The ish question there, though, was, I think we need permission on the parking decks with UP and Metro. And then another great idea was, when they pull somebody over for a drug offense, the car gets towed, and we make no revenue. It's a $150 cost. St. Charles charges $500 and makes $350. Batavia charges, I believe, 300, around 300, and they make 100, we make nothing. We can charge $300, and, you know, I know a lot of folks would be a little disappointed to have to put that additional burden on a drug charge, but I think we could probably get by. But all in all, that combination there can get us to, you know, 100 to maybe a little over $100,000 alone. So maybe we look at some of the revenue side of this equation, that's real easy, low-hanging fruit, in my opinion, which was great ideas, I thought, by the police, to help offset some of this and ease some of the burden. So my recommendation is, instead of trying to take away from the expense side of this equation right now, is to maybe add, agree to some additional revenue, and stay away from that place's reading tax as an option. The other thing is, you know, I still have, I still have some concerns about a number of other issues in this budget, but I think those are things we can discuss Wednesday meetings or in these fifth Monday meetings or something along the way, so we can all be educated, better prepared, and address this, instead of our backs against the wall with a week to do it, and, you know, you know, whatever, the shoot-ready-aim kind of scenario. I still have some considerable concerns. And I have another question, well, that's gonna be, I would like to get the council's thoughts on that in a second. What I also passed out here for you, because I'm trying to get a handle on this myself, I looked at the, on the city website, the wage and benefits for 2013, 14, and 2014, 15, and I just grabbed some, I didn't do them all, I didn't have time to do them all, but I grabbed some of these wages, and the, for example, City Administrator, wages went up 6.41%, and I guess my question becomes one of, I thought that the performance reviews, the maximum was like 2.5%.
From, for 14, 15, it was a 2%, up to a 2% market, plus a 2% merit, if they were below the midpoint of the range, and then there were certain positions that were way out of market, and they got an additional market increase.
So not only do we get, they get performance increases, they get market increases based off of the market?
On the comparables, based on our comp plan.
Okay, well, I have, I have, I mean, some of these numbers are, in my opinion...
Yeah, on the Director of Community Development, that 127,000 you see, that was because that person retired and got payouts.
Okay.
So that wasn't, that's reflecting any payout he got for vacation time that was left over?
And then I look at some, and then I look at some of these out-of-pocket, and like I said, this is not something I'm up for discussing this evening, but I just was going through these numbers, and I just thought, I just wanted to share with the dais, if you look at, you know, Assistant City Administrator, I mean, out-of-pocket costs for all the benefits on a wage and benefit salary of $138,000 comes down to less than 4 tenths of a percent. And I just, I think these are areas that we all have to, we have to dig a little, dig a little deeper into.
And I think one thing to keep in mind, though, is that insurance policies range from $5,000 to $15,000 a year, so an employee who's on a $5,000 a year plan is gonna contribute a smaller percentage than a person who's on a $15,000 a year, same with the city. So even though that particular position may be only contributing 4%, 0.4%, they're actually charging, costing the city less, because they're on a single plan as opposed to a family plan.
Okay. The other thing I have in question is, I was looking at these, the total wage column for 2014, 15, and I was looking on the website, the total compensation over $75,000 pursuant to the 5 ILCS 120, and the numbers don't match. The number of the numbers don't match, are they supposed to match?
I don't know which two reports you're looking at. The one, the more...
I handed, oh, I didn't hand this one, I can give you this, we don't have to discuss it now, but I'll give it to you, I just pulled out a handful of them, and they don't match.
The, no, the, we changed, we changed the, they wanted us to have, the transparency folks who look at the transparency, wanted more information, so that's when we created the total compensation reports. That came after those reports, and they may match, but it may be different people in different positions that you don't know who's in what job title. I don't know, I would have to look at them.
Well, you can look at it, and then you can...
And then I can tell you.
You can let me know.
Sure.
Other than that, that's it for me right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. For everyone's benefit, if you wanna check through your email, you probably have a copy, but February 23 memorandum, February 23 of 2016, there's a three or four-page document that we were provided with respect to considerations of revenues and/or, for lack of a better word, reductions or eliminations, many of which Alderman Simoni and reference are included herewith. But again, we can begin anywhere you'd like to begin, whether it be raising fees or reducing costs.
This one's February 29.
Yeah, but it's the February 23 memorandum for the 29th meeting.
29th meeting.
Do we have an idea of how many cars a year would have to pay the $500 impound fee?
It's estimated that if we include, if we quote, "increased" a towing impound fee, we could generate upwards of $100,000. That was based on a number I believe the chief, or perhaps Commander Nash or Passarelli provided.
I think $100,000 would be...
A little high?
A little high.
200 cars.
A survey of our records for the past two years, we averaged about 90 toes that would qualify for an administrative fee.
Right.
We tow more than that.
Right.
For example, we had 65 DUI arrests last year. Not all of those involved a tow, but a good portion of those would, those would qualify. And there's the statute that allows municipalities to impose this type of administrative tow fee, has criteria set out, and there are many different types of arrests that would qualify for this. But an average of 90, rough number, talking rough numbers, would be about what we saw in the past couple of years, 90 each year. So I think that was probably, if we were looking at 300, I was looking at $300 as a, just a figure, it would be close to $30,000 or so.
Yeah, read the wrong ones, forgive me.
But doubling the parking tickets would be close to another 80,000. I mean, we've got 80,000 budgeted now, and I would imagine that doesn't...
I think that's a no-brainer, and I think we've discussed that a lot. I mean, they have not raised in many, many years, we've done surveys as far back as 2004, and we were far behind all other municipalities at that time. No one has a $2 overtime parking fine. I think we are the only ones in the survey, if I remember correctly, that had a $10 prohibited parking fine.
And so that's downtown, or is that all over the city?
That's all, everywhere.
Okay.
We're prohibited.
That's an easy fine, you're right.
It seems easy, but I would caution the council, and again, I'm agnostic about it, but we've had multiple discussions regarding increasing those fees in the past, and if memory serves me right, I know Alderman Rodecky and perhaps Singer will recall and Malata that, while it sounds great, the council came to the conclusion that it's part and parcel to the overall environment of the community, and do we really wanna find ourselves in that pickle? You know, you violate, you pay the fine, life is, you know, that's the penalty. But we all know, that we've all received phone calls too, saying, you know, "I'll never shop in your town again, because my God, I parked my car there for three minutes over, and it was ticketed." Just something to consider, Alderman Cummings, or, excuse me, Alderman Berger.
Yeah, I'll start with the easy question. On towing, we had that situation last year where a young man worked at a bar, then went out with friends, and he kinda did the right thing, he left his car and walked home, and then there was an event the next day, and he couldn't be reached, and his car was towed. Would that, is that the kind of thing we're talking about, where he...
No.
No, that would not be, he would, he just paid the towing, flat towing fee.
Correct, these would be arrest situations.
Can you talk a little bit more about that? So you're saying, like, drunk driving, if the car needs to be towed, if drug offenses?
According to the statute, some of the things that would qualify for an administrative tow fee would be things such as DUI, arson, burglary arrests, DUI for drugs or alcohol, any felony arrests that involved a tow, controlled substance arrests involving toes, driving while license suspended, driving while license revoked, driving without a valid license at all, retail theft, and thefts of other kind that involved a vehicle. So by statute, for those and other, and others that are highlighted in the statute, state does allow municipalities to impose a reasonable administrative fee to recoup some of the costs that are incurred by all the time and resources that are utilized having to, you know, process and arrestee.
Okay, thanks. You know, yeah, I feel comfortable with that, what you just outlined, I just wanted to make sure, those cases where, you know, the event happens and we, it's, we deal with that, I know we talked a lot about that last year, it's a timing issue sometimes, okay. And then a more difficult question on the charging events double time, or when they have to reimburse us for police presence at their events, they pay straight time now?
Currently, they pay straight time.
And do...
About time and half if it's overtime.
They pay what it costs us.
Correct, right.
Okay. They pay what it costs us without a surcharge.
So, for example, if there's a detail on a Sunday, or on a holiday, they would get paid, they would get charged double time. Any other time of the year or week, it would just be a time and a half.
Okay. Do any surrounding towns charge kind of a premium for...
I don't know of any.
And I'm not sure if we're allowed to, that would be something we'd have to look into, because again, that might be like imposing a fee that we're not allowed to as a non-home role community, but I don't know the answer to that.
Because I'd be wary, I understand the reasoning behind it, and they're getting our services, but I do think there's a benefit even to the, some of those smaller events, I think about some of them on the weekend in the fall, some of the smaller races and things that do get a lot of people onto Third Street, and, you know, a nice September sunny day, those people then scatter into our shops and restaurants, and I would hate to see us lose too many of those because of a...
And we do try to keep those costs to a minimum. When we can, we use officers that may be on duty, so we don't charge them for, you know, overtime rate, obviously. During special events, there are officers that are on duty on a midnight shift, for example, that set up barricades, post signs during their shift, and get, you know, they're not charged for that. And that takes up a considerable amount of time and effort on the part of the officers that are doing it. We use ESDA, or GEMA, which they're called now. I know Commander Passarelli and Commander Nash have come in on their time, and as salary people, they come in on the weekends to help out, and they're not being charged for that as well. So we do what we can to work with the organizers to keep the costs as low as possible, because we do know that even at a time and a half rate, it's a significant impact for some of these, for some of these events.
But they're usually, they're making money on their end, too, so I appreciate your flexibility, and you obviously are very creative about how you do your scheduling, and it might be something we need to talk about more. It seems like a more complex, maybe, topic than some of these others that we're talking about with ticketing and towing, so, thank you.
Alderman Cummings, do you have your hand up? And then Rodecky.
Didn't, in Miami Vice, didn't they take the guy's boats and take the guy's cars?
If it were only so easy.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're not in Miami.
Fishing boats on the Fox, what can we do?
Alderman Rodecky.
Thank you, yeah, there's a lot of things to consider here, and I think, as with most things, a middle ground might be the way to go. My first reaction to the expense side of things, I get the parking ticket, and I did live through the discussions of increasing those, and, you know, what it does to the brand of the city, and I'm not against that, but I think the no-brainer really is with the tow. I mean, I think we have administrative costs that we incur when we do these things, and we're not getting paid for them, so, you know, these are, that, I think, has no rub to the general citizenry at all, so I would be in favor of increasing the tow charges to $300 to generate about another $30,000 in administrative costs, which leaves us now about another $90,000. And, you know, I can take a pretty quick look here, chief won't like this, but I would take a quick blush and say, hey, I would reduce the overtime in the police department by 60,000, round it off to 300,000, and it'd be pretty close to historical averages, knowing full well this is a plan, you know, this is not a to-die-for document, but before you pull the gun on me, chief, let me finish, hold on. And, you know, other things to look at, and I'm sure there are probably reasons for this, but I looked at this, at the budget line for line, and there's an awful lot of items that either just didn't make sense, of course, not having the budget explanation behind or the narrative of the department had to explain it, but, you know, I could look at Division 91 Streets 501, it looks like there's $40,000 of additional overtime being budgeted there, and there might be a good reason for it, but historically, if you look at what we've done, something's causing that, I don't know. And there's about five or six other items, that's why I sent the email over the weekend saying, hey, is there something that we can talk about, you know, prior to the meeting to have an understanding of, are these things on the table, does it make sense to reduce these, just to get to the 120, and put this to bed and move forward with some other business at some point. So I don't know what the council's druthers are, but I think there's, if we, I think, as a starting point, the administrative costs on the toes, a no-brainer, now we're down, now we're, we've got it down to $90,000 or $88,000, and I would be willing to go line by line to find the other 88. And overtime, chief, what would you say about losing 60,000?
I would say there's probably not a, I would not support that. I think the 360 is ultra-conservative, and I wouldn't be surprised if it goes over that.
All right, so tow just went to 450 now.
If you'll look at that, take a look at that survey that was done, you know, there's a reason why many of those are 400 and 500,000 dollars.
Yeah.
The last two years were higher because of the large cases that we dealt with, the types of cases, hundreds of hours of overtime, and that can happen at any, in any given year. If any of one of those things happens, again, it doesn't have to be at that magnitude, we're gonna go over 360, I would not be surprised if it goes over 360.
So the 360's not being extrapolated off, is still, is not anticipating large cases and...
Correct, and keep in mind, 105,000 is holiday pay.
Yeah.
So, and in those previous numbers that you've looked at in the budget, those do not include holiday pay. So you factor in holiday pay in those, 360, including holiday pay, is slightly less than what was spent in 2014.
Well, I guess I would defer to the chair, what's... What's, what do you think is the best way to address this? Should we look at the revenue side, get an agreement on what we're willing to take on the revenue side and then go to the expense side? Or what's your draw, you know?
Well, it was my anticipation that folks would come to the meeting with suggestions, suggestions, excuse me. But I keep referring back to the February 23 memorandum, which we have a series. I believe there's some 20-odd suggestions that some will rattle feathers, no question about it. Some are probably, what the heck you thinking? But, you know, we are where we are because we chose the action we chose. And so I think it's up to the council to determine what's most palpable with respect to reducing costs. If in fact those costs are germane to the overall successful operations of the community. And we know full well that by reducing some costs may impact other organizations, we know that. You know, the towing fee was one, the raising of the parking, the ascribing actual costs to festivals, overtime service, the police service, the water, public works, those all have overtime elements with respect to festivals. That's why I think it was recommended the one direction to go in. But again, it's, the floor is open, so we have, I'll throw this out just for headlines, what the hell? Brenda, don't type. But, you know, we have $45,000 in crossing guard costs, we have $35,000 in the riding cane program. All those are on the table as well, as they were on the table on the 29th too. So if we're serious about everything's on the table, then everything's on the table. Alderman Cummings?
Given the choice, which is what we're looking at, we're looking at choices. Given the choice between cutting out crossing guards and assigning a $500 tow fee to a drug offender? I don't know how long I have to think about that, but I know which direction I would lean on that. Given the choice between decimating riding cane and slapping a $500 fee on a drug offender, I know which way I would lean.
The drama's overwhelming. You can make a motion if you'd like.
I know, it's surprising, isn't it, that I would take this position?
No, not at all, I'm not surprised by anything anymore.
And, and the, you know, it's interesting, at some point, you know, if we go to a $20 parking fee rather than keeping it at 10, it's interesting to see what happens. In Naperville, I got my car towed once, one time is all it took, one time. That car will never get towed again. I now know that Naperville tows at a minute after, whatever it is, three or four. If we went to $20, how many people would then choose not to offend? Because I can tell you, sometimes I think, you know, 10 bucks, the hell with it, I'm leaving my car here. And I'm going downtown because the train's coming in. And so I don't know that our revenue doubles, I think it increases, but I'm not sure that it doubles. I'm not, I'm not against that, that $20, going to $20. I am against getting into riding cane and I'm against getting rid of the crossing guards. Given those choices, again, thank you.
Let me just, for the benefit of the community watching, on the off chance that people think we're all Beelzebobs and or Santa Clauses, there's a list that was established, and we can add to those lists, of course, but in terms of general fund revenue considerations, we discussed the places for eating tax that was eliminated by the council. We discussed implement video gaming and licensing establishments, the council chose not to pursue that. Increase parking violation fees, increase building permit fees, implement building permit fees for not-for-profits, increase plan review fees, increase zoning board of appeal fees, implement towing empowerment fees, increase, if you will, increase business license fees in general for liquor, restaurants, vending, cigarette vending. Increase false alarm fees, implement standalone cell tower lease fees, increase right-of-way fees, implement festival reimbursement policy, increase commercial scavenger license fee, implement a business registration program, licensed taxi cabs, implement special event application fee, implement solicitor fee, implement alarm connection fees, increase natural gas tax, implement towing license fee, increase carnival license fee, increase fees for carnival rides, games, food, implement amusement tax, implement contractor registration program, increase Basset training fees. It's exciting stuff, man. Increase commuter parking fees, increase daily lot fees, increase the cemetery fees, that's where the cemetery fund though. Those people have had a rough week already. All sorts of stuff, the mosquito abatement program eliminated, Zika schmika. Crossing guards, riding cane, and of course, there was discussion regarding the mental health board. That was in fiscal year 2018, of course. And we discussed the hotel motel tax with respect to support of the chamber. That's been determined already by this council, so there's all sorts of options, so Mr. Simonian.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things, personally, the crossing guard fees, I think, I think that should be handled by the school district, quite honestly, but that's a whole nother episode. With regards to the reason that I like the parking ticket and the towing is because those are fees that are applied to people who have broken the law. And it's not going to impact someone trying to, you know, do something to their home, building, developing, et cetera. With regards to the $10 versus $20, when I go downtown, I park as close to the train as possible illegally because I know it only costs me $10. And so I wouldn't be worried about the person who came to visit us and got upset because they got charged $20 after three minutes. I look at it as, how about all those people like myself who are parking illegally for $10, now free up those parking spaces for people who come down here and want to spend just a couple of hours and within the hours that those parking spots were supposed to be open for. If you go to across the train station, all those spots that are, you pay $10, you sit and watch all those cars that sit there all day long because they, people jump on the train for $10, they're last minute, they need to... And that takes up a spot for someone who wants to come down and shop for three or four hours. So I look at it like that, and I think these two make sense to bridge a good chunk of this gap. And I think the rest of it can be a rounding error. So that's, in my opinion, at this time. I think all those other ones you just mentioned are all things that we need to take a look at over the next year for next year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Singer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the council is quite aware of the position in which I, in regards to the cost of the riding cane program. It is something that, of course, has been very near and dear to me since I've been a council member. My feelings are as such that there certainly is a quantifiable benefit to the senior citizens who have been paying taxes practically their whole lives. I don't think it's a real drain on our tax dollars. And I don't think the taxpayers are, I do feel the taxpayers are getting great amount of value for their tax dollars. So I certainly would feel very uncomfortable if we thought about removing that program or in a sense even reducing what the cost might be at this point in time. It doesn't really cost $35,000 to run that program over a period of years. Average is out to be about 24,000. And if you remember, I had suggested possibly lowering that amount by somewhat a 5,000 or so. And Ms. McKittrick said she didn't feel comfortable with that, fearing that because of the fact that the program is funded and granted funding, that funding may once in a year, a year or so disappear. So talking to Sherry regarding this issue as well, and she feels comfortable with the numbers, feels that it's always more beneficial if we start with the number as it is. Begin lowering that number becomes more difficult to increase it. So I think we should just leave it as it is. I would appreciate very much if you would consider that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Alderman.
I'll make a motion to have a towing administrative fee of $300 placed, Stan.
There's a motion on the floor to implement a towing administration fee of $300 on all vehicles towed from Randall Square.
No. All vehicles towed based upon?
Yeah, Chief Mex is going to clarify to make certain that the second was.
An ordinance does have to be passed.
Right. It'll have to come back.
So the recognition is the draft ordinance for our consideration? Draft an ordinance for our consideration?
And what dollar amount in revenue would you like us to plug in?
Well, he said 90 toes, so what is it?
27,000.
27,000. No, I was putting the administrative fee on top of the tow.
So now if my car is towed at 175 bucks, it's now 475 bucks to get my car back? All our numbers are published. Alderman Maladra made the second. Any additional comments or debate regarding that matter? Chief, just clarification with respect to if, in fact, the council wishes to head in this direction. If my vehicle is parked at the parking lot near the train station and I'm in a private lot, that fee does or does not apply?
It would not apply.
It's only in a public lot?
Cars broken down would not apply, illegally cars would not apply at all, regardless of where they're at. It's only for arrests.
Okay, got it.
I don't have any. Do I?
Any additional comments on that matter? Roll call vote would be, I think, wise?
Tara Burghardt?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Motion passes with nine affirmative votes, no nay votes and one absent. We continue. Alderman Kilburg?
I would likewise, I think the support is here this evening for an increase in the parking fine as well from 10 to 20. If you go to any motel or hotel in the city, you're paying $35 a night now for parking. True, this, you know, Geneva isn't downtown Chicago, but I'm just saying. I think $20 does make somewhat more of a statement as it relates to parking illegally. And we're certainly at a point where we haven't taken any action on this for some time, where I think it at least should come to a vote to see where everyone sat on it.
I believe the motion would be to direct?
Increase from 10 to 20.
Chief, to draft an ordinance reflecting that change for our consideration. There's a motion on the floor, seconded by Sino. Additional comments, questions? Oh, yeah, what dollar amount shall we plug in?
What revenue would you like to plug in? No, I know, I need a total revenue amount.
80.
It's estimated at 80, but so if we double it, we'd go?
80.
Is that, is that? According to the notes here, it says.
It's currently 80, we collect? Yeah.
So 80 we're plugging, we're adding?
Maybe 150,000 because people are going to be better.
I just want to know what we're adding, I don't need the total, so 80?
Yeah.
70.
Add 70. There'll be some increased compliance, I would think.
Tom's going to quit parking downtown.
Yeah.
He's going to have to pay double now.
Questions or comments regarding the motion? I would echo comments made a couple of weeks ago with respect to our debate regarding the places for eating tax. And there was some pretty powerful sentiment that if we are to consider an ordinance for implementing that tax, and we have yet to notify anybody that we're doing this, my question to the council is, who is in charge of notifying all the business owners, despite Mrs. Gaines, who's here present this evening, that the city council is considering doubling the parking fines? I'm assuming we would encourage all business owners that join us at a future meeting to debate whether or not this is a good idea.
Sure. Maybe only those businesses who have customers who are breaking the law.
I was going to say, I don't understand.
I don't know that it's necessarily customers.
But historically speaking, the greatest Rubik's Cube in this town is parking.
And that applies to employees.
And that applies to employees as well. Again, I'm agnostic about it, but I would caution, and I shouldn't say, I shouldn't caution the council, but I suspect what we'll see is some discussion on this, that, listen, I work in a store on State Street hypothetically, and the closest parking I have is three hours. I've got to leave now every three hours to move my car. Understood. If I choose to leave it there for a day, okay, I can afford that for 20 bucks, ouch. Is that not the tipping point? I don't know.
Well, the question I have is, I don't know if there's an answer, is how much of that is happening?
A heck of a lot. You can, we can speak to our dear friends here at the library who have, I think, stated fairly clearly that there's insufficient parking for library professional staff. So we encourage, and for those of you who have been around long enough, remember the days when we actually provided tags for people to park in the courthouse lot.
Yeah.
Many people have commented that the courthouse lot, particularly during the winter months, is too far away. There's a sense of, of a lack of safety concern. Whether that's true or not, it's there. They don't want to walk that far away, they'd rather leave their business for 15 minutes and go move their cars. So it's a jockeying effort, again, the Rubik's Cube. I think it could be fairly easily argued that the moment I receive or someone receives a $20 parking ticket without the knowledge of this debate happening, and I suspect that we'll get lots of people to participate, but just be forewarned that it's a significant increase. And when we talk about brand and we talk about Geneva being a, you know, an environment where people are always welcome, et cetera, and we don't want to penalize you for being here, et cetera, we give our judgment to the police officers, a ticket accordingly. If we're counting on revenue based on doubling the fine, how flexible are we going to be? Just a caution, I guess. It worries me.
I don't know, I mean, to me, if I'm a business owner, I'm more irritated at the fact that all the parking spots are filled with employees that shouldn't be parking in three-hour spots. And you're, okay, I let you go out to move your car, but is the other option is I lose a customer who gets frustrated because they, they now have to walk four blocks in the winter to come to my establishment. I don't know, I mean, I, for me anyhow, personally, I just, I mean, if we have a parking problem, let's figure out or try and where to address it, but I don't think that... I mean, I think there's an argument both ways, but I think if I'm a business owner, I'm more worried about the revenue I'm receiving. Because I need revenue in order to pay the expenses.
Well, I don't disagree, but it, just before I recognize Alderman Maladra, it seems to me that, that we immediately dismiss the places for eating tax because of concern over a potential $2.50 addition on a $50 bill, but we're willing to double the parking fine on somebody who may enjoy a dinner and spend $50 and be late in leaving the lunch. That's just my thought, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have, I'm sorry.
Your comments echo the, all the comments that I made when I started on the city council. I, you know, I talked about, you know, years ago, I used to work at Woodfield, and if they caught an employee's car parked close, that car got towed. We had to park on the other side of Woodfield Drive, and they had our license plate numbers, and they actually patrolled and things like that. So I agree with you, it's fascinated me why, why the employers aren't more concerned about up-close parking for their clients than their employees. But I just want everybody to know that the things that Kevin is mentioning are just things he's made up. We've wrestled with this every, every single time we talk about anything. The most recent, I believe, was we changed the hour limit on some parking on Second Street. And City Hall was full of downtown employees passionately against that change of time limit. It's a gnarly problem. And so at different times, I've talked about, we need to work on lighting and wayfaring signs to help people get to the courthouse at night, on winter nights, it's dark, it's kind of scary. I would like to do a more recent inventory of our parking. I would like to do a more recent inventory of our parking. Yeah, I take 636 train, which is kind of early, but not the earliest, and that overflow lot on 31 is empty, and it's empty when I come home. So I am curious what the state of our parking situation really is. And, you know, I just raise these things periodically, and we'll get to them when we can, I'm sure, but Kevin's point is valid. It's a, it's a problem.
And to clarify, we're not taking action tonight per se, other than the direct ordinance being drafted. Alderman Rodecky?
How long have we been at $10?
Since Lincoln.
Well, you know, all the arguments, the spurious arguments about whether or not, I mean, the fact of the matter is, I mean, I look at this not even as a revenue generator, this is just kinda getting in step with the times here a little bit. I mean, I, I understand all the arguments, I was on the parking committee, you know, I know what, what this may, but you know what? People will learn very quickly, just as they have when we change signage, so, you know, I look at this as just as a measure of something that probably should have been done a long time ago. And truly, I mean, if we do have a situation where, because it's been so long that the fine is insignificant, then it takes the teeth out of everything we do with our parking program anyway. So, you know, I think that's the greater argument, so I have absolutely no problem supporting moving it to $20, and I support the motion.
Alderman Singer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be interested in knowing, as you indicated, and I do understand the plight of the people who work in the community and service to customers, how many of them are really full-time employees, that they have to be concerned about moving their car three times in a period of eight-hour period of time if they're working? I'd be interested in knowing how many of those would qualify to have to do that. Secondly, I wonder if maybe we shouldn't increase the period of time in which we allow them to park from three hours to four hours, and see if that might be an issue possibly we can consider.
Alderman Simonian?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't disagree with you, I think communication is necessary, absolutely. I don't disagree with the communication part. I would be seriously curious as to see what business owners think.
Alderman Burkhardt?
I feel like this is budgeting on the fly here. We're kind of throwing things on the table, and we're quickly all debating them with no input from anyone in the public, because the public didn't know we were gonna be talking about any of this stuff tonight. I mean, we wouldn't institute places for eating tax because we hadn't talked about it enough, we hadn't gotten enough input from restaurant owners. Again, that would be a couple dollars on a $100 bill. I'm not opposed to looking at parking fees, but I just, I'm gonna vote no tonight because I don't have enough information, I feel like. You know, I worked with a homeowner on, with Chief Mexon on Fourth Street, someone who had problems there for years. We had, I mean, how many meetings did we have about, how many emails did we, about a half a block of parking, cutting that, the hours, or not allowing parking from one street corner to one driveway so these poor people could get out of their driveway? I mean, we had some real concerns that we were eliminating, you know, six spots for employees in downtown Geneva, and I don't know what the impact on a $10 to $20 fee is on the library employees, on Little Traveler employees, on Graham's employees. Even if they're part-time, I'm sure they work longer than three-hour shifts, so, so I'll be voting no on the parking fee for that, for that reason. Thank you.
Alderman Rodecky?
I disagree. Completely different things, apples to oranges. The eating-for-places tax is simply a tax revenue generator. Much different, much different ramification than imposing a tow fine on a felon, or raising a $10 parking fee that hasn't been raised that anybody in this room can remember, okay? I mean, don't, not looking at it as a revenue generator, it's become, we go through tremendous gyrations, and we have with our parking, you know, how many hours, where it's at, where, I mean, this thing has been thought through. If it's lost its teeth in its effectiveness because the penalty and the fine hasn't been increased for 20 years, I mean, we're fixing something, in my opinion. If we have administrative costs for towing and for that, we should recoup some of that. If our, if our parking fees have lost their teeth, and our parking program is really not really enforceable or serving the purpose it should, then we should increase it. If we get the revenue from it, great, but the places for eating taxes, apples and oranges compared to considering things like this. That's a, that's a straight revenue generator that's being put on the backs of a business community that, you know, we are a restaurant town, so I, I think that warrants much more discussion and deliberation. You know, and this, we're doing things on the fly, I don't know how else we do things, you know? We could have a committee, we could continue to look at it, we can analyze it, you know, I think the question is much more simple, that we're fixing a couple of programs, and in the, in the process of doing so, I believe we'll generate some much appreciated and needed revenue, but this is not like we're going up and putting up red light cameras or trying to, you know, generate revenue from some other means. So I respectfully look at these things as completely different, and comparing them to the places for eating taxes, apples and oranges. Thank you.
Alderman Burkhardt? Alderman Simonian?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Alderman Rodecky. The other thing, too, is if you go to any of these retail outlets anywhere, and you see the blue parking spots, which are employee spots, they're always the worst spots in the lot. They don't park them next to the door. And number one, and number two is, this decision should be made in the best interest of, again, the taxpayer, not an employee that may or may not work here, who may or not park illegally, who may or not, may not take the spot of a visitor who wants to spend money here, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, this is, this to me is a no-brainer. The $10 encourages the violation, in my opinion. The whole idea of a parking ticket is to discourage you doing it again. And I just hear incident after incident, encourages people, well, no big deal, I'm not gonna, for $10, I'll stay there for nine hours. I just don't see that, that this is nothing but a no-brainer, to me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience? Anyone who needs to move their car? Jean? Is it after 5:00 we're safe?
Well, as an employer, I know that our staff does have a difficult time finding a place to park, so I don't, I disagree with the increase in the parking fee. I think we need to do a better job of finding locations for our employees to park, and maybe that would be one of your Wednesday night discussions, because in the 39 years I've been at the chamber, this topic has never gone away. I think I shared some postcards from Mr. Erde way back when saying, "Don't park in front of your own business," but we see it time and again, and I think most employees would cooperate if we could just tell them where else they might park, so that should be a discussion, I think.
And we have provided those maps to everybody?
There's just never enough.
Well, there's always the issue of proximity, too.
And there are times when the courthouse is full.
Is full, too, yeah.
There are times when they call juries and so forth, but I disagree with the, being on safe-to-walk to the courthouse, I think that's a pretty easy walk from Third Street, but I'm sure people would disagree with me, but I'm just saying, I think we need to give them some options, some other ideas of where they might park.
What, the $10? Just for the record, January 1st of 2004, 12 quick years ago is when we changed the parking, from two shillings to six drachma.
We don't know what it went to, we don't know what it was at, that's just what it currently is.
You could actually give a cow or a chicken. And you had to move your horse within 10 minutes, but you can't have chickens. We have a motion to second, any additional discussion regarding directing staff to prepare an ordinance for our consideration, raising the fines from $10 to $20? Roll call vote, Madam Recording Secretary?
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Motion passes with nine affirmative votes, one, excuse me, eight affirmative votes, one nay vote, and one absent. We estimated, well, we can discuss that ordinance time, but its placeholder in the budget is...
Seventy-seven.
Yeah. Seven-zero. Seven million dollars.
My tally comes up to 21,995 left. Nine fifty-five.
I was saying 22,000.
How much? 22,000.
Alderman Maladra?
This one's gonna go over like a lead balloon, I'm sure, but I brought it up before. The city council receives a salary, it's not a very large salary, but it amounts to $36,000 a year. Our partners on other boards throughout the city, school board, park board, receive nothing. I certainly don't do this for the $75 a meeting, so if we're looking for 22,000 and we're looking at 36 just in city council pay, I would say we could do without that for a year. There's your 22,000.
I wanna clarify, it's not 36,000 per Alderman?
No, 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 total.
Total.
In total. In total.
I already heard the...
The gas, yeah.
Right over here.
With the caveat that you can't actually require that, you could donate that back, but state statute requires that you can only change the salary for the next election.
That's a nice way of saying that was a stupid idea.
So you could all pass a resolution that says you're all going to donate your salary back, but technically you can't legally...
Sorry. Thought it was easy. He knew, he knew it couldn't do it, he just...
Alderman Cummings?
I'm guessing that Rich Marks could address this better than I could, but I'm, I think tax-wise, if we were to donate that back, we'd still get taxed on it.
Yeah, we would, we'd have to be taxed on it. We'd have to get the...
It's a great, it's a great position to be in.
Yeah, we would.
Depending on how you itemize, though, you may be able to...
No, no.
Yeah, but if the city pays the tax portion, we can get it down to 22. There you go.
Well, Betty Maltice, here we come.
That counts as revenue, though.
Alderman Rodecky?
Since we're looking for $22,000 here, Stephanie, Division 45 Citywide Services, Legal Services, 543, looks as though we've incurred 82,000 in 2014, it looks as though we incurred 53,000 in '15, it looks as though we're estimated to incur 63,000, yet we have 100,000 budgeted in 2017 for that. Can we reduce that by 20?
You can, just remember, by eliminating the assistant city administrator position, you've already, are planning to expend more legal expense. That was discussed, I'm not, I'm just throwing that out there. And we have had years where we've been close to 90,000, it fluctuates depending upon what's going on. But again, you can, and if you spend more, then you'd come, we'd come back to the council for an amendment.
Yeah, we're budgeting 35,000 more than what we're projecting, just in that one category. So why don't we take 20, what was the number, two?
Two.
Why don't we just make it $22,000 in budget, $78,000 there?
Have to set less budget?
Well...
Well, we're still doing the expenditure, we can't have it. We'll do the 21,955, just to make your point.
Sir, motion on the floor, Alderman Rodecky?
Yes, I make a motion to reduce the 2017 budget from, for Division 45 Citywide Services, Category 543 Legal Services, to reduce that budget amount from $100,000 to, what was it, what was the math? $78,000.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Simonian. Come answer questions, Alderman Burkhardt?
When we talked last week about eliminating the funding for the assistant city administrator job, we talked about that that job wasn't just gonna go away, the responsibilities with that job, right? And so we were gonna outsource, hire part-time, get our department heads to all do a little bit more work for a little bit more money, and take all our legal services outside the building, so all the labor negotiations that Stephanie has done would be handled outside. So where's that money gonna come from in this budget?
It's going to be $13,000 more than what we projected to spend this year, so 13,000 of it's an increase.
So we think 13,000 will handle what Stephanie did with our unions this past year?
Maybe 10. I don't know. Well, it's a job too squashed.
You know some cheap attorneys, I guess, so.
Well, at this point, we're budgeting, we're just trying to balance the budget to be, I mean, as the mayor said one time, this gets amended.
Oh, it'll be amended?
Many times. So I think we're just trying to come to an agreement, to a balanced budget to submit, and then some of this, when we hopefully work over the next so many months, we can make those amendments and adjustments.
It is quite the awkward position, is it not? Alderman Maladra?
To Alderman Burkhardt's point, and to Alderman Simonian's point earlier on, we have, over the course of this budget discussion, done some of what I call policymaking on the fly. We have to circle back on a number of issues and figure out what the ramifications are, how we're gonna do it, and things like that, and so what I ask this council and the mayor to do, we have to hold ourselves accountable to actually do that, because we've talked before about reserving Fifth Mondays to talk about these things, or setting time aside to have the discussion, and we never do. And over the course of the budget discussion, the mayor has raised it, Alderman Simon has raised it, I've raised it, I'll infer that you were raising it, too, because it serves my purpose right now.
Yes, yes.
But it's incumbent upon us to, to hold ourselves responsible to do that, this, this business of policymaking, when our backs are against the wall, we have this kind of deadline, while it does add expediency, you know, in the time-cost quality triangle, you're speeding time, but your quality is gonna suffer. That's just an irrevocable equation. So I take her point as one of the things we have to circle back on.
Okay, so then... Well, I'll bring another issue up, if you feel better about it. Okay, then let's...
There's a motion on the floor, so we're technically supposed to be speaking to the motion?
Okay, but there's, can I, well, there's other parts in the...
Give it a shot, what the hell, I'm sleeping anyway.
Well, so am I, that's why I wanna get this accomplished at some point, because this is just a bit of housekeeping, but, okay, account, maintenance and supplies, account total 60, maintenance and supplies 627, motor, fuel, and lubricants. Okay? We've spent 54,000 in '15, we're projecting to spend 49,000 in '16, but we're budgeting 71,000.
Unfortunately, Alderman Rodecky, it's not relevant to the motion on the floor.
Yeah, you said give it a shot.
I know, and I shut you down.
Okay, then we'll leave the motion going.
You can change the motion.
You can change it.
No, I don't, I'm not gonna change it.
On the, on the motion on the floor, this is to reduce legal citywide services from 100,000 to 78?
Yeah, I guess that's just an illustration to the motion that's on the floor about, in support of the motion, because we could continue to go down in.
Oh, we could, I mean, there's no question about it. In fact, I do smell sausage, it's awesome. This is quintessential sausage being made, right? It's necessary, perhaps, but it's interesting nonetheless, because now we're just grabbing and reaching for straws to achieve a magic number that all of us, combined, me included, created, so.
They're all magic numbers, I mean, the number we had before was a magic number.
Well, I'm not dissing anyone, I include myself in the group, I'm just saying. Motion on the floor, reduce legal services citywide by 100 grand to 78 grand.
No, yeah, not by 100, from 100.
From 100, excuse me. Anyone in the audience? Madam Recording Secretary?
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Motion passed with eight affirmative votes, one nay vote, and one absent. Any additional discussion regarding the proposed fiscal year twenty-seventeen budget?
And you actually have to make a motion?
Right, to approve it as amended, right. I wanna see if there's any additional discussion regarding any of the light items, or... I entertain a motion to recommend the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen fiscal year budget as amended. Resolution number, excuse me, twenty sixteen dash twenty.
And we'll amend all the numbers in there to reflect the changes.
Exactly. Such a motion?
We have a motion.
Excuse me. Any discussion on that main motion?
So does this, I guess the motion, does it take it to the next council meeting that we see it, or is it, this is it? Yeah, this is council, you're right.
This'll be amended, and then it'll be submitted, filed. Roll call vote. Madam Recording Secretary?
Tara Burkhardt?
Nay.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Mladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Motion passes with eight affirmative votes, one nay vote, and one absent. And I'll entertain a motion to waive, talk about a budget service.
Kevin, do you vote on that one?
Oh, I do vote on that one.
You'll vote on that, I mean, I think you do.
Yes, I, I vote aye.
Okay. Sorry, just procedural. I, I thought you did vote on that.
All right, come back as that. I'll entertain a motion to waive the fees. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Marks, seconded by Alderman Simone. Questions or comments regarding that matter? Roll call votes in order. Jean?
Tara Burkhardt? Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Mladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Motion passes with nine affirmative votes, no nays and one absent. Any new business? Hearing none? Oh, Alderman Simone?
I'd like to just thank again Chief Mexon, soon-to-be Chief Passarelli and Commander Nash, and Chief Olson also. He spent quite a bit of time with me in the consolidation PowerPoint he did, so thank you very much. Appreciate it. Now I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Simone to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Singer. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone. Good night.